I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen meeting for September 5th, 2017, back to order. We started tonight's meeting in Executive Session where we discussed land purchase and we also discussed the recent decision on the, the Land Court decision on the Congregational Church. That will announce later in the agenda. It's a line item in the agenda. As required by open meeting law, we are informing you that we will be video, audio taping, as well as live broadcast in this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience that wishes to video or audio tape must notify the Chairman now. Seeing no one, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I still turn that way.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to start tonight's meeting with a brief moment of silence for Bill Reese. He was a small equipment operator for our DPW for the last 10 years and he passed recently. Weekly briefing, anyone for weekly briefing?
Two quickies, Mr. Chairman. CIVEC was granted limiter intervenor status in the EverSource rate case and what that means is that we're limited to issues related to net metering credits, a topic I believe you addressed at a hearing that was held on the rate case at the Community College. We've hired an expert witness, are using our general legal counsel. Expenses will still be substantial and so at our last meeting, CIVEC voted to increase the cap on legal expenses from $20,000 to $35,000. It may be necessary later to exceed that amount, but we'll decide once the decision is rendered by the DPU whether to go on. At this time, we don't, we're hoping that our expenditures will be covered by what we have in our legal budget for fiscal 18, but if we go over that, we may have to come back with our hands out. Other things at the, at CIVEC, we discussed whether to proceed with requesting a half cent adder for round one in fiscal 19 and I voted in favor of doing that and so did the majority. I think it was unanimous, so Liz Argo will probably be coming around to make a presentation and making me ask. The last time I was here, Mr. Kakounis and I were unable to answer a couple of questions that members of the Board asked. Mr. Ballantyne asked what the net metering price was changing from and to. It's going from 18.024 cents per kilowatt hour to 15.538, a difference of about two and a half cents rather than, and not just the two cents. Ms. Kavanaugh asked about changes in, increases on customer bills and there are at least two. One is that for the typical residential customer who does not heat with electricity and currently pays $3.73 for a flat rate customer charge per month, that's going to $8. And in addition to that, what's called the minimum monthly reliability charge is a new fee that will be charged to net metering customers so that they contribute to the maintenance, repair, and so on of the distribution network. Last fall, National Grid in the other part of the state was allowed to increase that from $4 to $5, so I think we're talking about a number in that range. Offsetting that to some extent is that the, what's called the distribution charge and those itemized usage charges on our bill, that is now .0639 cents per kilowatt hour is going to go down slightly to five, around five cents. That's it for CIVEC. The Utility and Energy Conservation Committee is still waiting for you to vote on our proposed change in title and charge. You more or less accepted it when we presented it, but there were only three of you here and you chose not to vote that evening. However, you have appointed Mr. Worth. We will be holding on the third Thursday, our regular third Thursday of the month meeting, which is September 21st, a meeting with Seth Pickering, who is the Green Communities Regional Coordinator for the Department of Energy Resources. Ms. Greenhalgh is going to join us and give us the benefit of her experience with green communities out east. I'm hoping Ms. Kavanaugh, our liaison, is able to attend and of course, the public is welcome.
Thank you.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Larry, will you just let the public know what this potential change from EverSource would cost the town on its landfill project?
Yes, the, the estimates that we have presented to you would cost Harwich $135,000 a year in reduced savings from the power that we generate.
Thank you.
And for all of the round one, it adds, it's almost a million dollars.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Anyone else for weekly briefing?
Excuse me, just let me add, Mr. Howell asked a question which I did not understand in the context of what I was presenting and I would be happy to meet with him offline and talk about it.
Thank you, Larry.
I believe he cut me off.
Chief? There was no injuries?
Just a reminder, Mr. Chairman, to the public that September 11th is next Monday and we will be holding a ceremony at the fire station at about 20 minutes of 10, quarter of 10. Certainly, the Board and the Administration is invited as well as the general public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Richard Waystack for the Council on Aging. You may know that our new Council on Aging Director started today, Judy Wilson, and I put a flyer on each of your seats there, hoping that you will join us. I'd like to personally invite you to meet the new Council on Aging Director next Tuesday, the 12th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Community Center Multipurpose Room. Would love to have you meet her. We're excited to have her on board and thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
I'll be quick. Jamie Goodwin, Station Manager, Channel 18. We have a retirement in my volunteer crew. Paul Coughlin, after 17 years of service to the Town of Harwich is retiring. So we're having a little farewell tomorrow in the multipurpose room at the Community Center from 9:00 to 11:00, coffee and tea. He's going to be missed.
Thank you, Jamie.
Extremely. I'm now looking for volunteers.
Good evening, Cindy from the Harwich Chamber of Commerce. Just a couple of updates. I know we've had a number of questions throughout the community regarding next weekend, but first to start, we have the parade this Sunday at 11:30. It will start on Freeman and run down 28th to Dome. Then next weekend is the Cranberry Festival, as everyone is aware, full of arts and crafts, 9:00 to 4:00 on Saturday, 9:00 to 8:00 food vendors, 12:00 to 8:00 will be the Cran Jam, 12:00 to 8:00 is the beer and wine, as well as inside of the Community Center, this year is the first Fall Business Expo that the Chamber is putting on. The final event of the night is the fireworks, which we had announced after everyone agreeing to it. Couple of things we want to let everyone know, the parking, handicap parking is at the Community Center, public parking will be at the Town Hall, Brooks Library, the Little League Fields, Brooks Park, the high school marked areas, there will be one-way northbound on Oak Street and then there are school buses from 9:00 to 5:00 picking up at the elementary school and in front of the Harwich Cultural Center. They drop off will be at the Community Center. The big note, we want to make sure everyone is aware of, there will be no parking on Cranwood and cutting through the private property as we are having snow fencing line the access to the field. So I hope everyone does find that, the update, okay.
Sandy, this, this all on your website as well?
This is all on the website as well as, I mean, I'm going to send it to Sandy and to get it into the paper as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm looking for Mr. Brown, I don't see him in attendance. Jack Brown is the President of the Friends of the Council on Aging. We'd like you to save the date if you would. October 20th, the Friends of the Council on Aging is sponsoring a dinner and dance with a 20-piece big band. So folks who like to dance, swing dancing, this is going to be a great night. It's going to be at the Seaview in Dennisport. It's one of the largest that can hold a number of people that we need. Any proceeds from the event will go towards the Friends of the Council on Aging to assist the seniors of our community. I will hand you each a personal invitation, so if you're able to, would love to have you. Would love to comp your tickets, but you know, under the conflict of interest laws, we cannot comp them, so we hope you will join us.
Thank you, Richard. Anyone else for public comment and announcement?
Good evening. My name is Erin Orcut. I am the Business Administrator for the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School. I'm here representing the tech and Superintendent Sanborn, who sends his regrets unfortunately. With our upcoming vote on October 24th, we're really in opposite directions these days. I understand that Attorney Giorgio is going to be speaking to you about the, the vote language and the semantics of the vote. One thing I did want to use public comment to get ahead of was something that I found a bit to be confusing in some of the packet materials that were provided to you in advance. Reading through some of the correspondence, with all due respect to attention, Attorney Giorgio, there's many references to the tech deciding, electing, or opting to use the mechanics of the vote, and the vote being Chapter 71, Section 16N. This is of course unusual to, to most folks because most regional agreements use Chapter 71, 16D. D calls for a town vote where N is a ballot vote. The tech is not choosing or opting to use this method to conduct our vote. We are simply following our regional agreement that was established prior to our construction in 1975. So again, I didn't want anyone on the committee to be misled into thinking that this was an option. It was what our regional agreement was founded upon and which we are operating. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Public comment and announcement, anyone else?
My nose is bleeding. Very quickly, Chris Joyce, Voter Information Committee, and following on Erin's comments, on the 3rd of October, we'll be hosting a discussion on the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School, the construction at 9:00 a.m., taped by Channel 18, and it'll be shown a few other times after that up to the vote, which I think is the 24th, October 24th. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment and announcement? Moving on to the consent agenda, Larry.
Mr. Chairman, the way it's constructed, at least two of us can't vote on the minutes. We weren't in office on May 1st.
Which, so you want to pull May 1st?
If you could.
Okay, I'll do that. Mr. Chairman, I move the following consent agenda items. May 30, 2017 Executive Session, June 19, 2017 Executive Session, July 10, 2017 Regular Session, July 24, 2017 Regular Session, August 7, 2017 Regular Session, B, confirm the offer of employment to Dean Langos.
Langos.
To the position of Greenskeeper 2 for the Golf Department, and C, accept the gift of $10,925 from the Ora Gaylord A-Ruth Trust for the Community Center, and authorize the Chair to sign the acceptance letter.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead and read the other one, Larry.
Public hearing?
No, no, the consent agenda that you didn't read.
May 1st.
The first one.
Oh, okay. I move approval of the May 1st, 2017 Regular Session.
Second.
Moved in seconded to approve number one, May 1st, 2017 Regular Session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstained?
You can abstain, right?
Yeah, but you weren't.
302 is.
Yeah, 302, you can't say aye.
You abstain. And just for the record.
We're here.
The Attorney General says you can vote on the minutes because you're not voting the accuracy of the minutes, you're only voting that they are the minutes. But 302, Chris. Okay, moving on to public hearing, public hearings and presentations. KP Law update on the sale of marijuana ban, John. Chris, do you want to just give a quick overview?
Chairman, would you like me here or at the podium?
No, here's fine, John.
Yeah, so maybe just by, by way of overview, I know that some folks are here too from the Planning Board and there's a discussion about, the townspeople did vote in opposition to the marijuana, when, the marijuana article when it came up on the ballot and subsequently there's been a lot of activity at the State House to try to, I kind of hesitate to say clarify because there's still some items I think that are a little bit confusing in it, but to clarify the, the process. So I know that, I think it was the last meeting which Planning Board was in attendance, wanted to find out what's the prioritization and there is different process depending upon what the Selectmen want to do from a policy standpoint, whether we want to pursue having marijuana or whether we want to enregulate it or, or not, and that's why we invited John tonight.
Great, thank you, John.
Good evening, everyone. So the, on the 28th of July, the Governor signed the, the new marijuana law, which was intended to address some of the ambiguities and issues that came up in, in terms of the, the law that was approved at the ballot last November 4th. And as Chris said, the, there are some significant changes that were made to the law and in particular, the law now distinguishes between towns that voted in favor of the retail marijuana and those that voted no. Because Harwich voted no, should the town wish to ban retail marijuana establishments, you would have to only enact a zoning bylaw at town meeting. If you had voted in favor of marijuana last November, then you would also have to have a subsequent ballot question, plus the zoning bylaw. So in terms of what your options are, the law essentially allows you first to enact a zoning bylaw that would ban retail marijuana establishments altogether, that's your first option. The second option would be to limit the number of retail marijuana establishments to 20% of your off-premises alcohol licenses. And then thirdly, you, and I don't think this actually is relevant right now in, in Harwich, but you can also limit the number of retail establishments to fewer than the number of medical marijuana dispensaries that operate in the town. And I don't believe you've had any applications for that. So that would be, that's if you want to limit or ban retail marijuana establishments and the Attorney General takes the position, because the law is not entirely clear on this, but takes the position that you would have to enact a zoning bylaw. We're actually recommending that if you choose to pursue that route, that you also enact a general bylaw as well in order to address some potential issues with grandfathering and zoning freezes and that kind of thing. Now, short of banning marijuana retail sales, the town has the option to enact a zoning bylaw that would regulate what's called the time, place, and manner. So just as you do with other forms of retail or other uses, you could make, you could limit the location of marijuana establishments to certain zoning districts, you could do it by an overlay district, you could certainly require a special permit issue before, you know, before, before a building permit could issue for a marijuana establishment. And those are all options that, and a lot of towns are pursuing that to make sure that, that these establishments are located in the appropriate location within the town. I would, I would also point out that as of last Friday, there is now a five-member Cannabis Control Commission and that commission has to start accepting applications by March 1st of next year and to enact regulations in that same time period. So there are a number of unanswered questions in terms of how this new commission will regulate the sale of marijuana and we're going to just have to wait and see what those regulations provide. So if I, if you have a question tonight and I can't answer it because we don't, we haven't seen those regulations, I certainly hope you'll, you'll understand. Now, just to set the table here in Harwich, at last annual town meeting, you voted a zoning amendment to create a moratorium on the location of retail marijuana establishments and that moratorium extends through July 30th, 2018. So you certainly have time here in Harwich to decide what you want to do. If you do want to enact a zoning bylaw that either regulates the location or if you want to ban marijuana in some fashion, you could certainly do that at the next annual town meeting in May. If, should there, should an application be filed in the interim with the Cannabis Control Commission? The way the process works is the town will be notified and you'll be given an opportunity to provide comments to the commission if you, if you, if you want to oppose it. Obviously, you have a zoning moratorium in place. You may or may not have a zoning bylaw proposed for the May town meeting, but the only thing we would caution the town is, we would want to make sure that whatever you decide to do, that that be in effect before June 30th of 2018, so that there's no gap, if you will, in terms of the town's regulatory scheme. So one of the things you might want to consider in addition, for example, if you wanted to ban marijuana, you might want to consider extending the moratorium as well, so that there is, so you would avoid any gap in terms of, you know, in terms of the prohibition. The Attorney General has been quite open about approving zoning moratoria through December 31st, 2018, but not beyond. But that is certainly an option you could also, or the, the Planning Board could also consider. The one other thing I would mention is that the new law provides a local acceptance statute that allows you to tax the retail sale of marijuana. I believe the, the state tax went up to 10, I want to say it's a 10.45%, thereabouts. If town meeting adopts the local acceptance statute, you can assess a 3% tax on the sale of marijuana, retail marijuana here in Harwich.
Thank you, John. If we were to extend the moratorium, no applications are considered by the Cannabis Control Commission until we make a decision?
Well, that's certainly what we would anticipate because as a matter, because the, the law expressly allows towns to ban or regulate and certainly to enact moratorium. So yes, I just would want to make sure that we, whatever you decide to do, we can get that in place, approved by the Attorney General and published prior to the expiration of the moratorium. And that might be a challenge for June 30th.
And then the, just to remind the public and the Board, November 16th, or the November 2016 election, the Town of Harwich did vote against this, 4,461 to 4,002, so 459 people more said no than yes. Can you tell, tell us on the opt-out, has there been any decisions made, the tax created by the state? If you opt out of it as a community, if there's 351 communities, only 51 of them participate, do those 51 get that tax and are we precluded from any grant money that may be funded by that tax?
You only get the tax if there is a retail establishment in your town and you adopt the statute that permits the, it's sort of like the motel and the, and the meals tax, you had to adopt that.
Even on the state side, the state 10%, we would be?
You get none of that. You get 3% if you decide to accept that statute.
All right, questions from the Board, we'll start with Don. You all set? Can I?
Just to be clear, the three options were to ban it completely with the bylaw, limit the retail establishments to 20% of alcohol retail sales establishments?
Yes.
And then what was it about the dispensaries, limit it to?
Fewer than the number of dispensaries that are operating in the town. So if you had one, fewer than one is zero, I guess.
Since we don't have any.
If you had two, it would be one.
Okay, thank you.
Julie.
So I have a question, so we would, for the zoning, we would do a zoning and general bylaw to, for safety purposes, right?
Correct.
So if we were to, for example, go with the, the time, place, and manner, and then we, so that would be the zoning and then we would do a general one as well? How would we go about that?
No, I think you would do the time, place, and manner as a general, as a, excuse me, a zoning bylaw.
Okay.
Yeah. It's only if you want to ban it completely that.
That you would do, okay. That's it.
Larry?
I'm just trying to figure out the timeline.
Okay.
On this, because if we were to take one of your three options at town meeting in May and we have to get something to the, the five-member Board by the end of July, we have like a, a month and a half or so to do that, how's that work?
Well, the, the commission has to start accepting applications no later than March 1st.
I got that, I'm just trying to figure out.
And then they have 90 days to act on the application. What we are anticipating is they will be sending, if you get an application here in Harwich, they'll send the Board a letter saying, we have this application, please tell us what you're, what you permit and what you don't permit. And so what you would say in that letter is, we have a moratorium in place until at least June 30th, so nothing can be cited, we can't even apply for your permits before then. But if you were planning a, to hold a vote to either ban or regulate, you would want to notify the commission of that as well at that time.
Yeah, I was taking your point of we had to do something by the end of June next year.
So here's.
For us to meet a, to meet that deadline through town meeting, I'm just wondering, how long, do we have to wait for them to react to it? What's, how's that deadline fall on their action?
So you would want to have whatever zoning controls you decide to enact, whether it's a ban or time, place, and manner, you would want that in effect by June 30th, because that's the date that your moratorium expires. Now, the Attorney General is taking the position that these, any kind, any zoning bylaw has to be not only approved by the Attorney General, but it has to be published, as you have to publish all bylaw amendments, you know, locally, so.
Give us time then.
Well, so your moratorium was approved at the May town meeting. It wasn't actually approved by the Attorney General. I believe it was July 12th was when we got the letter from the Attorney General approving that. So there, if the same thing were to be repeated, and I suspect there will be a lot of work for the Attorney General to do through the next round of annual town meetings, there could potentially be a gap that someone could slip through. So that's why you might want to consider extending the moratorium for another six months if you, if for example, you want to ban or regulate. You would also do this, the banning or the regulating at the same town meeting and I'm sure we could craft the bylaw to say that it, that the moratorium would expire either upon the effective date of the zoning amendment or December 31st, whichever is sooner.
Your, your expectation is then, an extension of the moratorium would go through very quickly, whereas the bylaw may take longer.
I think it'd be.
Still worried about the.
I think it'd be easier to get the moratorium extension approved by the Attorney General, depending upon what it is you decide to do. If you want to get complicated here in terms of regulating, then that could take longer for the Attorney General to approve it. So it's a little bit of beltedness and suspenders, but I'm just saying that you may want to consider that as an option, do both. Not that other towns are the gold standard, but for example, Nantucket is doing the same thing. They're, they're enacting a moratorium and they're enacting a zoning bylaw regulating marijuana at the same town meeting.
Chris?
I just wanted to, I, I think there's a fundamental question in terms of the moratorium buys us a certain amount of time. I, I think that really the policy decision is what road does the Board want to go down? Because I think if I, if I read this right, that if we had an application, if we didn't do anything and the moratorium expires on June 30th, somebody goes to the Cannabis Control. somebody goes to the Cannabis Control Commission and applies for an application. We have no regulations. Then they could actually open pretty much anywhere in the community, and they would have to negotiate a, a host agreement?
Well, I...
I think it's important to, to kind of lay that out, John, in terms of...
Well, certainly, they, they could locate anywhere where their retail sales are permitted. It's not that they could locate in the middle of a residential zone. Because, but if you wanted to have special regulations for marijuana establishments, then you would want to do the time, place, and manner bylaw. So what was the last, I'm sorry, the last question?
I think my point is, this is more about moratoriums, there's more to it than about moratoriums. If no action is taken, then what's the potential circumstance the town would face? If, if somebody that's in a residential, I'm sorry, in a retail district wanted to start to sell, and they get approval at the state through the Cannabis Control Commission? The way I read it, the only obligation they would have with us is to, to do potentially a, a host agreement.
Right.
And that's it.
They, they probably would need a building permit depending upon what they were going to do to the building. They might need site plan approval, again, depending on the extent to which they're going to be changing things. But short of that, they could just open up.
They could just open.
Correct.
That, that's kind of, I, I don't want the board to, it's not just about moratorium. It's about, do we want to allow this or not, I, I think? And if we do want to allow it, then do you, how much do we want to regulate it?
Correct.
And I think that's what Planning Board is here for.
So this decision lies on the board of selectmen. We, we make a decision if we want to allow it or not. We don't have to go back to town meeting. We've been to town meeting. We then just create the bylaw?
No, no, it, it requires a town meeting vote. That's now been clarified, Mike. You have to go through the normal process of enacting a zoning bylaw if you wanted to ban it altogether or regulate it. So it's not a, there was, there was some confusion on that because an earlier version of the bill did allow us, the board of selectmen in a town that voted no, to, to, just vote to ban it. But that was taken out at the last minute, and now you do need a zoning bylaw to do that.
But in essence, we'd be voting not to allow it and create a bylaw and present it at a town meeting for them to say...
That's correct. The Planning Board could do it as well, obviously. So, but that, you know, or it could be done by petition. That's the other possibility.
Janelle?
Is there a legal age limit for people who can buy marijuana?
Twenty-one.
Is it 21, like liquor?
Yes. So we have, I don't know, did it make it into the packet?
Proposed.
Yeah.
In your packet, there is a, any update from us that we tried to answer as many of the questions as we could, so that, I would encourage you to look at that.
So it asks if the board has any other questions for Don? Because to Larry's point, if, if we decide to go forward with allowing this, Planning Board's going to need a certain amount of time to do what, what they do. They're going to have to have public hearings. So I intend to have this back mid-October, early November for the board to vote.
It's having to town vote, yeah.
Right. So I, I do expect to have this back soon. So I would put your thoughts together, and at that point, we'll have a vote on whether we're going to allow it or not allow it. Or whether to create a zoning bylaw or not. Don?
Unless I'm missing something here, either way, we're going to wind up needing a town meeting action, which is actually far in excess of the numbers you're talking about, because it would take a two-thirds vote.
It would take a two-thirds vote, that's correct.
So, I mean, whatever we do, whether we're banning it outright or setting up the circumstances that constrict where it can occur, when it can occur, how it can occur, I wouldn't just rest on what the ballot vote was, because that wouldn't have been sufficient in order to do anything.
Right.
Julie?
Could we possibly find ourselves in a situation, and I'm, I'm just trying to think, where we address with the two bylaws, the general and the zoning, and whatever way we decide to go on this? And then somehow have one pass and one not, and be in some...
Well, that...
I mean...
That's a possibility, because a general bylaw is a majority vote.
Right, to the two, they're so like, we, but...
Now, I...
Depending on how that's structured and what the alter, yeah.
Right. Now, that is a possibility. But, and if, so if the zoning did not garner the required two-thirds vote, you could conceivably be in a situation where you have a general bylaw only.
Right.
And I know the Attorney General has approved general bylaws relating to marijuana, but with the caveat that you also need a zoning bylaw. So ultimately, it might not work in that circumstance.
By May, what's it, to continue Julie's thought, what's the default position if neither passes?
If neither passes, your moratorium expires, and a retail marijuana establishment
Then we're out of the picture.
Can be located any, anywhere in town where retail sales are permitted, either by right or special permit.
Because I think that's where I was kind of going. There's actually three roads. The more, you continue with the moratorium, you don't allow it, you regulate it, or we do nothing, and then it could prop up based upon if someone has a retail location.
Can we come back at another town meeting, if we wish?
You could, but that's why you would want to extend that moratorium so that to December 31st, 2018. So that if your substantive zoning, for, let's say that you don't get the two-thirds vote, and the Planning Board needs to go back and tweak it, maybe take a different approach, you would potentially be able to do that through a fall town meeting in 2018 with a moratorium still in place. Now, if the moratorium isn't extended, well, then you've got a problem. But then again, the voters have probably spoken at that point.
Could we also, just as a backup, amend at town meeting our zoning bylaws for special permit? To have sort of a fallback?
Certainly. I mean, I would, I would recommend that if you do decide a time, place, and manner regulation, that you do it through a, have a special permit process in the bylaw. Because that gives the, the Planning Board, or whoever the special permit granting authority might be, an opportunity to put reasonable conditions on, on the permit.
Right, so if we were to be debating the marijuana general bylaw and the zoning bylaw, but also amend our special permit bylaw as it exists now to include marijuana facilities need to have that special permit in place before they could open, we'd be covered by any gap that might come up, as long as it passed?
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
I, I do think if, if there's a decision to make to, to regulate it, to allow it somewhere, then I think we want to do the local acceptance as part of that, that if we're going to have an establishment in town, we might as well at least consider getting revenue from that. So I, I think certain things go hand in hand depending upon what road the, the board wants to, the board wants to go down.
Janelle?
So the local acceptance is a maximum of 3 percent? We can't match the state 10.45?
No, 3 percent is the maximum.
It's the max.
3 percent's the max. And it did look like the host agreement's 3 percent as well, so there was two, two elements to it?
Yes, well, let me just address host, the host community agreement. It is now required that a retail marijuana establishment execute a host agree, agreement with the town. Could only be for a term of five years. And I believe the, I think it's the 3 percent is the maximum
It is.
payment that you can get. But they have to enter into a host community agreement
Yes.
with the town.
And is there any way to know where the 10.45 percent tax revenue goes?
Follow a map to Boston.
What I, what I, I'm hesi, I hesitate to answer that, Janelle, because I'm not sure if the legislature earmarked that for any particular program, or whether it's just
General.
general fund revenue. I can look at that, I don't know off the top of my head.
I, I think that's a, could be a sore point, because increase the state from 5.7 or something to the 10, and increase the, the local tax from 2 to 3 percent.
Right.
And so...
Yeah, well, Colorado's about 34 percent. So, and they're still trying to figure out where they can get more money for this, so...
Well, I would like to see more of it come to the local rather than all stay in the state.
3 percent's nothing.
Okay. Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Don.
It's a logistics question. It, it keeps troubling me. I mean, I've been trying to follow where the bouncing ball is going here. But the federal government still takes the position that it's an illegal activity. Most of the banks are federally chartered. I'm unclear about our exposure in terms of police's public safety if all this stuff's done in cash, and how taxes are collected, because you'd have to find a bank that would be willing to accept an account
Or maybe it's...
Without retribution from the federal government.
Or maybe it's going to have to be an all-cash business. I mean, that's a problem. Like, you've hit, you've hit a nail on the head there, Don. Now, will this commission enact regulations that will provide some clarity? I know that there's another deadline in the act to allow the island municipalities to deal with the whole issue of how do you transport this?
On federal waters?
On federal waters. So there are a lot of unanswered questions, and I suspect the commission is going to be addressing those in the regulations, we hope.
All set? Okay, John's up again. KP Law update on funding of assessment for Cape Tech building project.
Correct. So I would like to address the comment...
Anita, would you like to join us? You sure? Okay. We might call on you.
So I would like to address the comment that was made during public comment, and...
Sure.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. In the regional agreement that governs Cape Cod Tech, the process for approving debt is under the procedure for a district-wide election. So we had first, Chris had first asked us about how this process would work. And I think the concern was that for a town like Harwich, obviously, it, it is a significant increase in, in your assessment. I believe it's in the, I don't know what the...
685 now, round numbers.
Okay, so which, which raised the issue of a debt exclusion in order to be able to, to fund the assessment with, should the question pass, without necessarily targeting other, other programs. So the, the process under the statute, when you have a town meeting vote, and this is what you did it, with Monomoy, you approve the debt contingent on the passage of a debt exclusion. And if that debt exclusion didn't pass, then you would, you were deemed to have disapproved the debt. Under this procedure for the, the tech, you don't have the same ability to, to make the vote contingent on a debt exclusion. But what you can do is you can have your, a separate debt exclusion question that isn't tied necessarily to the vote approving the debt, but it would allow you to exempt your assessment from, from Prop 2 and 1/2. So the question comes up, when do you, when, well, the first question is, do you want to sponsor a debt exclusion vote at some point? And assuming the answer to that question is yes, then the question becomes, what is the timing of that? So one option, my understanding is, and certainly I would, if I'm wrong, I, I would like to be corrected, but my understanding is that if this passes on October 24th, you're not actually going to see the assessment until, I believe, it's fiscal year 2020. So you do have time to deal with the financing portion of this if the question passes, which means that you could potentially wait until your annual election in May to put your debt exclusion question on the ballot. That gives you plenty of time to plan for the impact of this should the question, should the debt exclusion not pass. The other option would be to do the debt exclusion on the very same day that, of the district-wide election, which is October 24th. Now, it can't be on the district ballot, because only the selectmen can, can place a Prop 2 and 1/2 question before the voters. So what we've been discussing with Anita and with Chris is the possibility of having a separate town election held on the same day as the district-wide election. And if you choose to do that, there are some logistical issues that the town clerk will have to deal with. But, and I'll let, let Anita address those directly to the board. But it certainly is possible for you to do that, to have both a district-wide election and the, and the, a local town election on the same day, i.e. October 24th. And there are certain, I think, advantages and disadvantages to both. And, but that's, that's why you guys get paid the big bucks to make these decisions.
Thank you, John. Chris?
So just to, I guess, my two cents from a, a finance perspective. I've said this once before, but just so folks are clear where I stand. I think that if the voters are coming out to make a determination that they're going to obligate the town for $685,000 for 29 years, then, you know, we, we should have the same opportunity that folks that come out to vote that also have the opportunity to vote to pay for it. So that would take some logistics. It would take two ballots, it would take extra sets of poll workers, et cetera, et cetera. I think in the neighborhood of $6,000, if I recall the, the number. I think that there's some, some value to that. My concern is, and, and I think John's right, that we'll have a fairly smaller increase in the assessment because there's some design in, in 19, and then the big assessment comes in 20, based upon the, the schedule right now for construction. And my concern is that if, if folks voted today or October, and then don't have to pay for it until two years down the line, what else are we going to have on the ballot that the town's going to have an interest in? And when we get an assessment, I mean, to me, it's, it's a legal obligation that we have to pay.
Correct.
That I have to pay that first in terms of priorities. So when we bring in a, a million dollars in approximately, in, in Prop 2 and 1/2 money each year, and we're talking about allocating $700,000 of that automatically, that gives me nothing for raises, that gives me nothing for health insurance. So it creates a, a fiscal concern. And I know the, the town of Barnstable, different system, council manager form, but is doing, they happen to have a, a September election, so they have the ability to, to do that, where they're going to ask for the money first and then have the election next. But when I was looking at the numbers, we're the third-largest contributor in terms of it. So it's significant for us. Some of the smaller towns that, that don't have as much of a financial impact, and only have two or three people going, you know, they're not going to have the same concerns that we will. But I just thought, and, and we have a, a timeline here. In order to get it on the ballot, a decision has to be made by September 19th. So we have, we have basically two more meetings in order to get it on. And I think Anita would like to have some sense to get things in, in process if we are going to have to gear up and, and do the, the two, the two elections on the same day. One thing I think, just so it's clear too, is it's an eight-hour time span. And my understanding is locally, we can also have an eight-hour time span. So we would not be asking people to vote from, you know, 8:00 in the morning to 8:00 at night on paying for it, but only eight hours for whether you want the project. So it would be my recommendation that we make those co-terminus. So someone comes in, and they want to support the project, and they want to support paying for it. My concern really, and I've said this before, I go to the building committee meetings, I've been going to the building committee meetings. I think it's an important project and one we need to do. My concern as town administrator is, we need to make sure we're able to pay for it in a responsible manner, and not just leave ourselves two years down the, down the road in a precarious financial situation.
Yeah, and I would just add to what Chris said. So under the statute that the tech is proceeding under, I, I believe it says the polls can be opened no fewer than four, no more than eight hours. And I believe their intent is 12 to 8, the polls would be open?
You are absolutely correct. It is a four-hour minimum, eight-hour maximum. We have chosen the maximum from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
So we would recommend that if you're going to hold a special election, town election, you obviously have the same polling hours, even though that's somewhat different than your other town elections.
Great. Comments, Don?
Yeah, I'm going to have to preface this by saying what I'm going to say in no way speaks to the validity of doing the, the project or the kids' needs. But, I mean, it, it kind of reminds me of the first year of law school, where you realize there's what's right, there's what's wrong, and there's what's legal. And sometimes what's legal and what's right are the same. And that's kind of a profound statement. I mean, just because it says this in the statute, to me, doesn't necessarily reflect that that's the right thing to do. The way I read this, all kinds of convoluted scenarios could and may play out where people with low-leverage situations, where they've got almost nobody going to the school, they've got almost no financial exposure. If they vote in abundance for this project, it's the totality. It, it doesn't recognize geographic confines, like Harwich voted for it, or... If Yarmouth and Barnstable voted overwhelmingly for it, it would swamp the entire district. And would obligate our citizens to do a borrowing that they hadn't asked for, were approved. I mean, I, I would like some sort of assurance that we get past this point, that's, that you're going to address this and trust that the people who are going to pay for it can be trusted to actually act upon it. Because, I mean, I know the statute exists, and I know it was adopted... Because, I mean, I know the statute exists and I know it was adopted. I've asked that question. I looked at the agreement today again. That doesn't mean that it's the wise thing to do or the trusting thing to do for the citizenry. Anything else we spend money on that we borrow, we actually ask the people if they're willing to borrow for it. And that's absent in this. Any, other towns could make that decision for us. And somewhere down the road, somebody should be addressing this in a permanent way to maybe alter this agreement to make it look more like a regular regional school agreement.
I would.
Because there are going to be capital needs in the future. And this same thing is going to come up again.
Don, I would just add that because this is a regional, well, in a typical regional school district, any one member, any one town can disapprove debt and it cannot go forward. If you are a regional technical high school, your agreement can provide that, that it takes, as long as two-thirds of the communities approve, then it can go forward. But without that requirement, then it has to pass in every town, except in this instance, where the regional agreement provides for the district-wide election. But that certainly would require an amendment to the agreement if you wanted to proceed in some different fashion here.
And that's what I'm suggesting, that somewhere down the road, we revisit this because the right way to doing this is by asking the people who are going to pay for it for their permission to do it. And that doesn't happen right now. I believe I'm reading this right, that if there was an overwhelming groundswell support in a couple of towns, that it only matters that the overall vote passed.
That's correct.
Thank you. Janelle?
So say the regional vote passes and our debt exclusion question does not. What then?
Well, you could, you could always repeat. You could go back to the voters with more information, with more education, and try to get that debt exclusion passed at the next election. But without a vote under Prop two and a half, Chris is right, you will, you have to pay that assessment regardless of where. It's a legal obligation, so you would have to adjust your budgets accordingly.
Julie?
Well, I mean, based on what we understand, the vote has to take place in that format. It is what it is.
Correct.
So we have to do that and we have to make that decision. And to that point of if we, if we somehow fail in October, if we do move that way, which I think is a good idea, then we have the second opportunity to, as John says, re-educate. I mean, I don't think we really have a choice if we're going in the polls to vote for it because that's the mandated way we have to go. Then we definitely have to put it clearly out there that we need this to pass as well.
Larry?
It is what it is. This majority vote, if it passes, then we're obligated for it. And so if we're moving, I think the discussion right now is, are we doing it simultaneously or do it later? And my vote would be, even though I recognize it's a little more burdensome, would be to do it at the same time because that's where the education is geared for. That's what we're hearing, you know, the radio, the newspaper. I'd hate to spend all this time trying to educate people now and then do the same thing, possibly a year from now, go through the same education process.
Thank you. Well, my intention is to, is to support this, the double ballot. I'm going to bring this back next week for a vote since it's on the agenda as a presentation.
Yeah, we'll have, I'll ask John to prepare the ballot question, which we already have the sample.
I did, and I submitted it to bond counsel. Bond counsel has approved the form of the question that I drafted, so you'll have the ballot question.
So next week's enough time to get this voted through next week.
And just so that you know, because I know, I don't know whether Anita wants to weigh in here, but the way this would work is you would have two separate check-ins and two separate check-outs, if you will. The one machine can be programmed to read both ballots. So you, so I don't mean to put words in Anita's mouth, but it's something that can be managed. In fact, I believe she's run two separate elections on the same day before, but.
Great. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When we actually do come back with this, I'd be interested in the answer to this because I've at least heard that the district was willing to pay for the election as an election, just as the general process. There's rumor out there that if we add our own election in it, that you may pay a prorata portion of conducting the election.
Are you asking me to comment? Can I comment?
Yes. Thank you.
We, as Chapter seventy-one, Section sixteen N dictates, we are responsible for the cost of the vote for the tech to borrow. We are supporting the cost for each town of that vote, but we are not supporting any subsequent votes that happen along with that. Financially, we are not obligated, nor do I think it's appropriate to do so by law. But yes, we are incurring the costs amongst the twelve towns of the ballot vote to incur debt for this project.
To go on, though, that's what I'm looking for, for next week, because, what that number would be. Because most certainly, if we add on the second component, the town vote portion of this, it isn't doubling the cost of that election. It's an increment. But it isn't certainly doubling because it's duplicative.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't be prepared to comment on that. Anita has provided us with her cost estimate of what this will, this will cost. After all said and done, we expect to be billed and we will pay accordingly. But I am taking the quotes from each town because each town does bill and hold their elections differently.
Thank you for your answer. Anita?
Yes. I have sent Mr. Sanborn a quote of almost, I believe it was close to $9,000 to run this election for the eight hours. If I have to add additional staffing plus the additional programming of the machine, you're talking probably anywhere between six and $7,000 more, to which I did not budget for, and Chris is aware of this. So money's going to have to be found somewhere to subsidize my budget for doing this election simultaneously.
Thank you.
Okay.
No, I think Chris's point is valid. We're, you know, we're asking people to approve a project. We should ask them at the same time to approve the money. And obviously, that's going to cost us some more money to have a double election. So we should foot the bill on that as long as the percentages are correct and each town is getting around the same amount of money for the elections, then I have no problem with that. Anything else on this? All set? Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
So first up on old business is the First Congregational Church versus Cemetery Commission decision. The decision, Chris, actually, I'm going to, just a brief history of the suit and the decision, if you don't mind. How long has this been going on?
Yeah, I'm just, brief history, there's quite a bit of activity in it, so I will try to. I think in a quick summary, the town recognized in 2013 that there were cremains being buried on top of existing burial plots. And the town wanted that activity to cease. Litigation ensued. The church made the claim, which ultimately was successful, that the property is church property and that the property is owned. And that the town's role in that is that we act in, I think it was 1933, the town had approved a town meeting warrant article that if there were cemeteries in the community that were not adequately maintained, the town had the ability to expend funds to assist in that maintenance. So that led to, I think, a real period of confusion in terms of the town was doing work in the cemetery, but that the ownership was still within that of the church. A judge has ruled, I mean, it's a public document, obviously folks have the ability to read it, that it is in fact the church property. And the town had an opportunity to decide whether it wanted to appeal the judge's decision or not. The judge's decision appeared to be exceptionally fact-based decision. And I don't know if you want to announce it.
Thank you, Chris. So tonight, the board had voted that we have no interest in appealing the decision of the land court. And we've instructed the town administrator to meet with the pastor of the church to discuss ongoing maintenance and other issues related to this. So we are not appealing the land court decision. Anyone have anything on that? Comments, questions? Next up, under old business is the Visiting Nurse Association FY18 contract. Last week, I pointed out, last meeting, I pointed out that there was some dates wrong in the contract as well as some things that needed to be removed. Maybe there was a menu of services that were offered, not necessarily what we were going to get. We have a new contract, so this, I need a motion to authorize me to sign the new contract.
So moved.
Second?
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
A couple of questions.
Sure.
Just, and I don't know if you can, I'm involved for it regardless, but I'm just interested to know, what type of services have been provided in the past?
Yeah, I'm going to defer since we have the new health director here.
And how much have we spent the maximum, the total amount of contract in the past, or has there been excess?
Sure, I have that information. Megan Eldridge, the new health director. Primarily, the VNA is used for our communicable disease follow-ups. It's something that our town nurse currently doesn't do. And last year, our budget was $5,000 and we spent just over $2,800. And the year before that was, let's see, $3,700 and change. So we haven't yet used up the full $5,000, but it's there in case we need it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next up tonight was the Housing Authority charge and discussion of a meeting held July tenth in regard to the middle school. Housing CPC in conversation. I had asked Sally Urbano, the chair of the Housing Authority, to be with us tonight and no response. I did see that she sent an email to the board today. The email was with the corrected minutes, which I find interesting because there was corrected minutes. Jon Stewart takes the minutes for the Housing Authority. And at the meeting, from what I've been told, there was no discussion of changing minutes. The minutes had just changed. So I guess I'm going to bring this back when Sally can be before us. But my real question to the board is, why is the Housing Authority still talking about housing in the middle school when the executive body has come up with a two-year use plan of the school? And what authority the Housing Authority has to even be talking about this? Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got that concern myself. I'm reading this. I read the missive today. In some ways, it really misses the mark. The chair's observations about what would constitute proper notification under the open meeting law isn't about this board hammering anybody. It's about public transparency. And she alleges that she went back to the state and that they are fine with this. I can't imagine how twelve lines of new business were fleshed out in a discussion with the agenda itself putting the public on notice to decide whether they wanted to come to the meeting or not. And that's after all what an agenda is. It's an invitation. Is it worth your time? Are they going to have a discussion that you really want to get into the car and drive down and be part of? Their agenda said, "New business." That's all it said. And as the chair rightly pointed out, they started talking about the middle school. There's a number of areas here where people might feel compelled to be part of a public discussion of their elected public body. I mean, it's oftentimes when you get an opinion, like picking up the phone to the state, you're only going to get the opinion you get given the information you couch it with. I cannot believe the state would agree that twelve lines of new business wound up being properly noticed on an agenda by just the headline, "New business," preceded by the other headline, "Old business." I mean, what does that tell me? I know they're having a meeting. I mean, they might as well just say, "We're having a meeting. You want to come? Go ahead." I'm a little frustrated at their reaction to this. It's not as if we're trying to cause a controversy as much as everybody in this town who gets, who's either elected or appointed has an obligation to let the public citizenry, whose money they spend, the opportunity to decide whether they want to come to a meeting or not.
I just want to correct my date too. It was July twenty-fifth, not the tenth. Julie?
So just want to respond to it. So Sally had emailed me and I had spoken to her briefly yesterday. She said she apologized that she wasn't going to be able to be here and said that the director's notes were not the minutes. So I can't speak to any of that either because I wasn't there and I haven't read all of the various pieces to this. But she did note that the, some of the middle school discussion was based on inquiry, I guess, about, about their discussion, about whether or not there was some discussion about the middle school and housing. So I'm not sure. I think it'd be helpful to have her here as well. I also think it would be good for the Housing Authority to come in and spell out exactly so that everybody understands. And I mean this, you know, overall, that the town understands that the Housing Authority and how they're charged and that it is DHCD that oversees them. It's, you know, it's not, it's not Harwich, per se. So I think that is a good idea. I think that obviously we've already gone down the road of the middle school housing question and we know where we're at with that. So I agree that that shouldn't really continue to be a topic of discussion, especially under the circumstances where we're having so much success with, you know, our current endeavor, so.
Thank you, Julie. So I'm going to put this on the agenda to bring back.
Well, I was just going to, I guess, follow the same discussion. I, I know I've had some discussion, to your point, Don, that agendas have to be meaningful. And they should go forward with that. I'm not so troubled because I think someone came up with an inquiry. It's been going on some time about possibility of using housing there. Now, we've gone beyond that, but have that discussion go on that committee? I'm not, it was, it was on the agenda. I'm not so, that doesn't put me out quite so much. You know, nothing's going to happen. We've already superseded that. But if they want to have a discussion, it was properly noted on the agenda.
But it wasn't.
No, I'd say if it is in the future.
When I just, I would, I would disagree that it's really not in their charge. I think the middle school is a town asset. It's not a Housing Authority asset. To Julie's point, they're a state-appointed organization.
Only, only to the extent, Michael, that they're always looking for housing. And I agree with what you say, but I don't, don't know if we'd want to shut up any discussion on looking at housing if that were, you know, going forward.
Well, given the chairman of the committee was part of the petition article that failed a town meeting, and then to have it on her very first agenda, well, not really, but talk about it on her very first meeting, seems to me like it should be dropped. And the executive body of the town has come up with a use agreement and we should, we should live out that use agreement.
I would only comment, I guess, that, yeah, somehow this has gotten personal in a way. It shouldn't become personal. You know, deal with the policies and what the discussions are and get away from what's going on with this. I agree.
Okay. I'll bring it back. Thank you. Anything further on that?
Can I just note one thing?
Go ahead.
Not related to the Housing Authority, so just want to be clear, but also the Housing Committee working on a new charge with Art Boden. Just want to mention that.
Great. Thank you. Okay, next up is the Municipal Revenue and Economic Development Committee charge. This has been on the last two agendas. Now on this agenda, Janelle, I'm going to start with you.
I actually asked Michael to put it back on as it was the last time, and I noticed that it's not. There have been some changes made and I wondered where those changes came from. Do you know, Chris?
Actually, I don't. I thought staff received it from somebody.
Well, let's just talk about the changes.
Okay, so Larry, in our meeting last time, you had suggested that the Chamber of Commerce representative have a vote.
Right.
I disagree with that still. And I wanted Julie and Don to be part of the discussion before I changed anything. I wanted a full five-member discussion. So highlighted, you'll see, including one representative, that doesn't even make any sense because it says comprised of seven voting members, including one representative from the Harwich Chamber of Commerce. But then you go down and it lists what each member's job is, who is actually appointed, and there are seven. So this doesn't make any sense. It doesn't add up. And then as far as the bottom line, in addition, I like that they've, whoever decided to do this did make an acronym, Mr. Ed. We'll have dedicated staff support in the town planner with the assistant as the town administrator as alternate. Where did that come from? I have no idea. Did you say anything about that? Because I don't remember any of that.
Well, I.
Hang on, hang on.
Yeah, I do think in terms of that, I didn't do the work on this, but when you go through the, I mean, obviously I sat through the meeting and there was definitely discussion about that, so that the, this may have been revised to reflect the discussion. and there was definitely discussion about that, so that the, this may have been revised to reflect the discussion that the board had that appeared to be headed in a certain direction. I absolutely agree that the decision about the, the one member being from the Chamber of Commerce was a split decision. I didn't get a woman fuzzy that the entire board. So I think that that is a discussion topic, but I don't think anybody objected to the last line about the Assistant, I'm sorry, the Town Planner, she was actually in the audience at the time. I don't think anyone objected to having her assigned as staff liaison and having the Assistant Town Administrator. I will check with staff. They may have made the change, or it may have been Charlene, just reflective of the discussion that the board had.
Okay, thoughts on that? Janelle?
You know, we have a liaison to the Planning Board already, so I don't know that we really need to add another plate to Ally's desk. I mean, she's got a lot to do. Just judging from last week's meeting with all of the objectives that the Planning Board has for this coming year, I don't know that we need her to be involved.
So we did have that discussion and the, I would say absolutely the Town Planner should be involved in an economic committee that we're bringing new business in and we're looking at regulations. I think that's probably the most important seat.
But we have a liaison from the Planning Board. That person couldn't act as that person. I mean-
I know, I, and, and by the way, I'm innocent. I didn't write any of this stuff. But I did, I do agree that, I argued the two points last time that we're arguing again about, or discussing. The bottom one is, I felt that if it's going to be an active committee and something as important as economic development, it deserved staff support. There needs to be someone in town. And a liaison or volunteer is not the same as having, you know, that's being part of their job to help pull this together. And I really like to see this committee succeed, and I think the staff support is vital. That's my view on that. You know, I, and we're going to do, I guess, agree to disagree. I still would like to see the Chamber, they're part of the, as being important to the economic development and as being a member equal to the other volunteers, you know, basically their volunteer going into that, so.
So my reasoning on that is that the Chamber is a, basically, they're a nonprofit, but they're, they're a private organization. They don't represent the town. They represent their members. Whereas the, the volunteers who would be appointed by the Board of Selectmen, their job is to take the state ethics test and it's, they're representing the town at large. The reason I wanted the Chamber involved is so that a bridge can be developed between the town objectives for increasing the economy. As all, and also remember that this charge doesn't just talk about business development, but it also talks about municipal revenue. So, that being said too, I don't know that the Chamber member would have any business voting on municipal revenue side of things. But I, again, I think it's important to have that bridge created. So that's my reasoning.
So I, I would have to agree with Janelle on the Chamber. I think the Chamber is a separate organization. They're doing a phenomenal job with Harwich. We've had more, I've had a ton of compliments lately, but it is in place to support existing business. This charge is a new organization and I do believe that we should work hand-in-hand with the Chamber of Commerce. And I'm sure that the liaison to the Chamber of Commerce can keep the Chamber of Commerce informed on what we're doing. Chamber can send a member to the meetings, but they should not be a voting member and they should not hold a seat on this. But I, but I also agree that, I agree with that last sentence. I believe that the Town Planner, as much as she's available and in her absence, the Assistant Town Administrator, the Head of Community Development, should oversee this committee. And I think it will help to the success of it. As far as the Chamber goes, Chamber has plenty to do. I believe that they support the businesses that are existing and we're talking about bringing additional businesses into town and looking at regulations and looking at economic development. So I, I could go along with it personally with the, with the deletion of the sentence pertaining to the Chamber of Commerce and we'll just work in conjunction with them and leaving the last sentence. Larry?
Yeah, I will argue, I'll stand by my position, but I guess I won't argue forever. The one point I made last week that, that I would like to bring back is it's not in here. And, you know, I certainly applaud the, the mission or the purpose of generate revenue. But I'd like to see this committee also look at efficiencies. You know, if you look at economic development, there's always a discussion that can be had about regulatory impact, for instance. You know, are we, are we streamlining the regulatory and making it easy for economic development in addition to revenue generating? And I think that's an important subject that should also be brought into this discussion.
Julie?
I would agree with removing the Chamber. I, I think that's kind of a, I think the liaison part, you know, in terms of having somebody from the Chamber attend the meetings is a great idea, but I don't think they should be more involved than that. My only other question is, and I should have asked this previous, where we have appointees that will be liaisons, say, to real estate and open space and Harwich Finance, et cetera. So will they be attending, so they'll attend these meetings, but then they'll attend the other board meetings? Will they be expected to attend, like, constantly? I'm just trying-
I don't know that that's necessary, but just, like, we are liaisons to multiple committees. We don't go to the all of meetings, but we are privy to their minutes and we're available and we go to some. I think that would be okay.
So it wouldn't be, I'm just thinking because we're having trouble staffing all the committees, so that's fine. I mean, that's-
Yeah, so basically just so that each, each member of the committee kind of has a job beyond the meetings, you know, like that. In order to make this work, I feel like people have to have homework, you know, because it's, it's, it's a big task.
Right.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My first comment, actually, I don't want it to come off like correcting a report, but we got to find some synonyms for generate. The first paragraph has the word three times, so develop whatever. But in a more substantive vein, I'm not sure I quite understood what Larry was saying before, but I think I do. If they develop ideas for revenues, they have to be net revenues because there's certain things that they could develop that would actually cost us more in public safety, roads, water, that we're not looking for just more complexity. We're looking for advancement. So we may want to make a comment about them assessing, you know, revenues versus obligations that might be incurred. That's my two cents.
I do agree, Larry, with the sentence as far as the regulatory process goes. I think that stream, not streamlining, obviously we can't streamline, we can look at the efficiencies of our process and how easy it is for people to come here and do business versus-
We want to be friendly and, you know, that also is a way to increase revenue if you're costing less.
Janelle?
I don't have anything more. Just thinking about where to put that sentence.
We are meeting weekly again, starting next week. This is very difficult when nobody sends ideas back to Janelle, but Janelle, do you have enough information?
I'll work on that sentence and send it to you.
All right, and maybe you can come up with some synonyms for generate.
Maybe you could generate one.
And Don, could you send Janelle also your ideas? No back and forth, obviously, but send her your ideas, so-
Semi-athisaurus.
Be nice to come back with a completed document next week and not bring this back a fifth time. Thank you. Okay, next up on the new business request by Housing Committee Chair to address the matter of a member's non-attendance at the Housing Committee meetings. I'd say that we turn this over to the interview committee to deal with.
Okay.
Anyone have any, any issues? I don't think that's something we should take up here.
Okay.
Sure.
Don and Janelle, please. Support for passage of an act regulating and ensuring short-term rentals. Chris, do you want to do an overview?
Yeah, I'm happy to do an overview. At one of our administrator meetings, we, we get together as Cape administrators and have a discussion. And I believe it was the administrator out in Provincetown had asked the group to go and, and put forth a letter of support for a state bill that would basically tax short-term rentals. And I actually, I did raise and say, I wasn't sure where my Board of Selectmen was and I didn't want to have my name or the town affiliated for something that was really a policy discussion. So I just wanted to bring it back. I reread this again today and he, he did leave at the end kind of the towns that are supportive of it. They can have their, their names listed, towns that are not supportive of it. And I know that we had a discussion, I think it goes back to when Peter Hughes was still on the board. As a matter of fact, it goes back a little bit. And the, the question was, you know, where does the board stand on this? At one point, the board had expressed some interest in pursuing that, the tax on these Airbnbs. And then at a later discussion, it seemed to be not as apparent to me. So I don't know where the board is, you know, there's no reason for us to sign off or to add our name if people are uncomfortable. I at least wanted to, to bring up, certainly the gentleman out in Provincetown, the manager out there, had expressed that, you know, it is, it is revenue. It's a new revenue for the community. So, you know, it is something that has some, some merit. And one of the things that was a surprise to me, I think it was at that one Cape Summit, that almost fifty percent of all rentals are on Cape Cod, Massachusetts. So we are, we are a significant marketplace for folks to come and rent down here. And should we be trying to capture that, I, I thought that the legislature in that House bill had expressed some, maybe trying to earmark some of that money that's generated for wastewater purposes to specifically tie back. But before, you know, I gave my two cents and sort of like an email, Bob Lottenbach, but I just wanted to get a sense for the board, you know, is that something that you're interested in having, you know, me sign on to as the administrator? Because it's not just, in my mind, this isn't just me supporting something that's amongst the administrators. This is political actions. I wanted to make sure the board was aware of it.
Thank you, Chris. Julie, I'm going to start with you on this.
So I don't, I wouldn't support this in the sense that unless that, unless the bill exempts primary homeowners from renting their own homes to gain revenue to be able to stay down here where we're looking to keep families, then, you know, I understand the revenue stream and I, and I appreciate it and I don't disagree with that. But I don't agree with taxing primary homeowners who rent their homes, who are trying to generate some sort of revenue income to help them maintain living here. I also don't see how this would be uniformly enforced. I think it's really difficult for, it's another enforcement action that the town has to take. And ultimately, you have to hope that everybody does and acts fairly. And I don't know that we can assume that. So those are my two main pieces of it. I also would want to know specifically what kind of percentage that money was going to come back to us. So I don't support it without, without those revisions.
Larry?
I guess I don't have much to add to that. I will remind, I think, everyone that this has come up at town meeting, what, two or three times? And failed each time. It makes me a little uncomfortable for us taking actions as a board when this never has shown support at the town meeting. The, I was also a little concerned about the regu, I speak about regulations, but the regulatory aspects of this. If you're going into all primary homes and requiring them to spend money, because there'll be, there'll be a fee for that to inspect a home. And so that kind of worries me a little bit, but that's all I have.
Janelle?
I support this a hundred percent. I don't remember the exact numbers, but over Memorial Day weekend, the Airbnb numbers for Cape Cod were astronomical. What happens with Airbnb and people renting out rooms in their house? Or maybe they have an accessory apartment that they've made makeshift or what have you, is that it hurts our local businesses. A lot of our BnBs did not have full capacity during that Memorial Day weekend. And further, while I can appreciate the primary homeowner stipulation that you say, Julie, I still will disagree with that because of the Airbnb aspect of it. People can still be living in their home and rent out, like I said, maybe they've converted their garage into a little studio apartment with kitchen privileges. With Airbnb, you don't have to have an actual, like, unit. You can rent a room. And then as far as, like, second homeowners and whatnot, there's so much revenue being generated and it's basically free mon, free income for people. And I don't think that's fair either for the local business economy. And the last thing I want to talk about is the regulatory. So Airbnb actually would collect the tax and I'm sure that We Need a Vacation or CapeCodVacationRentals.com or HomeAway.com. I believe they, these businesses all have mechanisms involved in their payment processes that would actually collect the tax and pay the town directly. We would get all of that money because there's, there would be a state tax and just like with the marijuana, it would be three percent for us. We would get the, I think they're saying five point seven, but basically I was thinking six in my head. We would get that directly. And a few years ago, the Chamber President Jeremy Jingeris had done some research and based on the rental properties that he knew of in Harwich, summer rental properties, his estimate was over a million dollars a year in revenue, if we had that six percent tax. So for those reasons, I support it a hundred percent.
Don?
This is the end of that yang. Like, building on what Julie had said, Larry had said, it's been a town meeting twice. It still has major holes in it. They're acting as if these people are scoundrels and they're not doing anything. They're paying income tax to the federal government. They're paying income tax to the state government. They pay a real estate tax. If it's not their primary residence, they pay a personal property tax. I mean, at some point in time, how much is enough? The platform doesn't really intrigue me either. When they were first at the state legislature, viewing this as a fairness issue because some things look like a duck and quack like a duck, like time shares that were renting out rooms. They're really hotels. I mean, I had no problem with capturing that revenue. But when you start getting into private residences, the nuance between whether thirty years ago, they were actually dealing with repeat customers over the phone and now they're on an iPhone, but it's the same place, it's the same people, it's the same owner. That troubles me, but it also troubles me that inadvertently you're going to be collecting taxes from exactly the people that you don't want to. I had people working for me when I had my store who were booted out in late June so that they could rent out the places. Those people became transient renters in people's homes. To the extent they didn't go to Nickerson State Park, they would be subject to paying this tax. People are making twelve bucks an hour. I mean, there's, yes, there is no exclusion for anybody. It's done by term of stay. It is not done by economics.
I believe the bill that I saw had ninety days?
Yeah, but that's exactly the time period that you would be out of your, a place that you were renting for the other nine months of the year because I can make more in a week than you were paying me in a month.
And that, that week rental, they should be paying tax too.
But the displaced individuals are also likewise paying that tax.
Are they though? I mean, where are they renting?
Any place that they want to, if it's a room, they'd be subject to this because it's less than ninety days. But more than that, I'd be supplanting my own judgment. This thing was pitched at the town a couple of times, that the town of Harwich was in favor of it. And I know for a fact that the, this, this board, the prior board, didn't take a position on it, but the last town meetings that had it in front of it turned it down. I mean, we'd be supplanting what is the legislative body here. We're not. We're the executive.
I think though, you know, during those town meetings, Airbnb didn't exist. So you have to look at the, at the reality that these internet-based rental companies are destroying little small businesses.
They don't own the places. The people who own the places contract with them to rent them out.
Exactly. So they're taking away business from legit BnBs, legit hotels, motels, inns, you know? The people are going to come no matter what to Cape Cod. And I believe over thirty states do this already.
Bringing it back to a town meeting, I'm fine with that.
I think there has to be more education for the public as far as, you know, how the internet has changed- how the internet has changed since the previous town meetings. And also, I would love to hear from more area business owners, B&B owners and in owners. I know a few of them and they definitely have felt a real constriction in their revenue due to Airbnb and all the other, HomeAway, et cetera.
Chris, we talked about this with Peter Hughes, what you had mentioned. One of the big questions that came up was regulation. At the time, that board, we voted not to support this as well. What was the, or we chose not to take a position?
Chose not to take a position, as I recall.
So the, one of the big questions was regulation and what we were going to have to do as a town to regulate this.
Yeah, it is interesting because I think one of my goals and objectives probably two or three years ago was to study this. We did a report with Jeremy, actually was very helpful with it. Come to find out, we actually have a bylaw on the books that we're supposed to be doing this. And the town has not been engaged in that practice. But, you know, at least I get in a sense that, you know, if there's three that don't want to pursue it, the whole point is just to bring it up to see whether is this something we should pursue or not? And, I mean, you haven't weighed in yet, Mr. Chair, but I mean, it's three to one saying that there's not an interest, so.
So I don't have to vote?
You pay me for my math skills, so I mean, I get the idea.
And I would add that I think ultimately that there is some holes. There is some new pieces of this business, as Janelle said, the Airbnb. I happen to know somebody that has thirteen houses and they use them as Airbnb. So I think that there is some new revelations that have to go into this, but I wouldn't support it as it's written now.
I would be, I think what, I'd be for proposing a town meeting, you know? They want to do it.
Well, we'll bring that up another time. As far as this letter goes, Chris, I'd say no, you don't have to.
I think we have to wait until it's a state, until it's passed by the state before we bring it to town meeting, right?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Award design contract for Fire Station Two to Casel Brothers Boos?
Castle Boos.
Castle Boos, in the amount of three hundred and ten thousand?
Yeah, just in terms of this, Mr. Chairman, we had a town meeting approve three hundred and ten thousand. Actually, I think it was last Wednesday, there was an interview panel that was done. Myself and the chief met with the folks from Castle Boos to negotiate a contract. I just, in terms of this, the contract has in there, they came back with, and we did provide it this morning. We did not get it until Friday afternoon. But it was two hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty. And that gets us through design and bidding. So it does not get us to construction administration. But the way the article was worded, it was to just bring it through the bid process. I know the chief has been on that panel or working with that panel much more closely than I have. So he's here tonight, so I don't know if Norm wants to provide an additional overview.
Mr. Chairman, we've come quite a ways with the Station Two project. Identifying the need to going with a working group to this board, the Board of Selectmen, appointing a committee. The committee has worked very hard and very diligently. And they were successful in coming up with a good concept with some help from someone from Dennis that is working with some municipal projects over there. A RFP was sent out via the town engineer. And six proposals came back. And the committee reviewed all those proposals and had a grading platform that the engineer provided the committee and chose to interview four. I was present for those and Castle Boos, in my estimation, was the clear choice. And the committee also agreed.
Unanimous, right?
Unanimous. I would just point out that Castle Boos was the firm that built the police station and the renovations to the present fire station. And I was on that billing committee. And I found Castle Boos to be very responsible, very mindful of the needs of the departments and more so the needs of the town. So I'm happy that that is the recommendation coming to the board tonight. As the administrator said, we were, it was suggested that three hundred and ten thousand dollars would get us to the bid process, to this town meeting. And we've come back asking or recommending that Castle Boos be awarded the bid for two hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. Just as Chris said, there are other administrative costs that may occur if the town meeting decides they want to spend the four million on the renovations. So, but the good news is, we told the board three hundred and ten and we're recommending two hundred and sixty-six thousand.
Thank you, Norm. Larry, any comments?
None.
Julie?
No, great.
Janelle?
Great job.
Can I get a motion on this?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Architectural Presentation Selection Committee's proposal to award the design to Castle Boos. In the amount of, sorry, in the amount of.
Yeah, if I could just, they provided the recommendation, but the negotiation was actually done by Norman and myself. And it's actually to award the AIA contract to Castle Boos in the amount of the two sixty-six, seven sixty.
All right, so there you go.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And that should be in the signature package.
Great. Award design, oh no, here we are, Water Commission Meeting, August twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen, Discussion of Governance of Wastewater. Chris put a memo in our packet, but Chris, why don't you go ahead and?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had the opportunity to go down and attend a Water Commission meeting and had brought up two primary issues just while I was down there. One was how do we deal with the issue of the administration of the CWMP and kind of in general, the governance model? So I did after that meeting on Wednesday, August twenty-third, followed up with the attached memo that I did send down. I'm just going to kind of paraphrase this, that in terms of the governance, I think the Water Commission is supportive and had previously voted that the commission was okay with being transformed into a five-member elected water wastewater commission. And that they understood that the Board of Selectmen, most likely through the town administrator, be responsible for the capital portion. And that they would deal with the operational acceptance of the system once it's turned over to them. So I think if the board is comfortable, it apparently is okay with the Water Commission, that what I'd like to do is see if we can task John Giorgio with drafting necessary charter changes to actually effectuate that. I know there's some concern that there's no real reference in the charter in terms of wastewater and that right now, we're acting as kind of under state law that it's the Board of Selectmen. But to move in a direction where we can formulate a water wastewater commission as structured by, or as suggested by the Water Commission. And I did think there was some agreement on the board side too, the Board of Selectmen at some point. And then to also form the Enterprise Fund. So that was kind of one component. We will also, for FY nineteen, have to build a sewer budget. One of the things that we're going to run into is that we will have an assessment that will have as part of the IMA with Chatham, and we have insufficient number of users. Chatham has the same exact scenario, so they actually have a operating budget that they fund to offset some of those costs so that the total cost is not borne by a very limited number of users. So I think we would be compelled to do the same thing. On the second component, that I had asked about the water wastewater superintendent whose job description, just job description, was changed. And when Dan Pelletier joined the organization, he kind of knew that wastewater would be coming. And he was willing, and the board was willing, the commission was willing, to have him work on being the agent to kind of be the enforcement person relative to the comprehensive wastewater management permit. So we did a long, actually Sharon in the audience here did a tremendous amount of work to put together all the different compliance elements. And now that has to be maintained and monitored. So Dan was willing to do that. So I wanted to kind of see how much and see if I could bring this back to the board. I think it is something that the governance model would be good to get to. And then how do we deal with the CWMP? And just in terms of ultimately, this is always going to fall under the Board of Selectmen because it's going to be, has been already designated under the CWMP as the wastewater management authority. So it already lies with the board to make the big policy decisions regarding the construction. But this just kind of lays out a potential process. And the Selectmen would delegate authority to the Water and Wastewater Commission that they would be responsible for doing the billing, doing the budgeting, and any applications for abatements or other operational issues they would be dealt with. And the bigger issues of dealing with the IMA, coming up with a regional agreement with Yarmouth and Dennis, would still stay with the Board of Selectmen until such time as it got turned over. But I think this kind of starts to kind of lay out the concept. I think the board was headed just prior to town meeting last year, last year, the year before, losing track of time. But, you know, if this is something that the board is comfortable with, I did CC this to the Water Commission. And if, I mean, I haven't heard any negative feedback from this, so I presume that they're okay with it. I can certainly follow up with Dan. But if the board's okay, then maybe we head down this track of starting to put some form and function together.
Thank you, Chris. Don, you start with this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've been saying even before I was on the Board of Selectmen that right now, there's this construct that doesn't exist in the charter. We've got a hybrid employee nominally works for the town administrator for part of his duties and nominally for the water commissioners and the other part of his duties. And we need to resolve that somehow. It would make a lot of sense if we develop the construct and then turn it over to an operations authority, which they are. And our water department, for those people that are out there who don't know, there are places that have water districts, they're wholly separate. There are places that have water departments, and we've got one that has an enterprise fund. So it's kind of in between, I mean, I assume that they'd be setting up another enterprise fund or a subaccount in that. It just seems like that's the way you would want to operate this, once you make it. I don't think any of us here actually were thinking in terms of going down to the department and personally overseeing an operation. So I would support the move in that direction.
Janelle?
I support everything too.
Julie?
I support it too.
On to Larry.
As you might suspect, I have some comments. I'm in general agreement, but I would like to see it clarified. And I'd like to see it clarified in a couple of major ways. I would like to see the Board of Selectmen have clear responsibility for implementation of the CWMP, for the wastewater management authority. Because if you look at what's involved with the CWMP, it's not only the wastewater, the sewer per se. We're talking about potentially land purchases, that, we're talking about alternatives. We're talking about funding sources. I'd like to be sure that that remains the responsibility of implementation of the CWMP with the Board of Selectmen. And once the phase is complete, we look at Chatham, for instance. And then I'm perfectly comfortable with that then transferring to the Water and Wastewater Commission that Chris has proposed. So they're handling the operations, you know, fees, all the things they do for water, they now do for wastewater. But there's a logical sequence of events where we take charge of doing what we're, you know, saying policy for the town and implementing the CWMP. And then once the phase is done, it's then transferred to operations. Because I agree with Don, none of us is going to go down and worry about pipes and stuff. I would, but I have no, I know nothing about those. I also wonder if, and my last point, Michael, and then I'll get off. You know, we're asking Dan Pelletier, who's a, who's a, who do an excellent job of operating the water and wastewater system. In terms of implementation and design and, you know, construction, this is an expensive project. We may want to think of getting, you know, either contract engineer or someone to tackle that phase of it before it goes into operations. You know, we're just now moving into the survey process. We have to lay pipes and all that. So I think we're one person short of making sure that we had to provide the adequate staff support on the implementation and construction. So that's my, I'd like to clarify, and I'd also like to see that show up then as a simple organizational chart so we can, people can understand it.
Chris, with what Larry just said, that I read your document to say exactly that without all the legalese and the fancy terms, is that?
Yeah, actually, the first part, it specifically says in there that the Board of Selectmen maintains its position as the wastewater management authority, so that's in there.
I would like to defuzz it, if you will, if that's a word. Okay, Julie, it's not a word, she's looking at me. So that is clear. I think an organizational chart. I want fewer words. I want fewer words so that it's clear who's doing what to whom.
Okay, I mean, it says, under the CWMP, it is listed responsible party as the wastewater management authority, which has been deemed to be the Board of Selectmen. I don't know how.
But then you go in and out of that in later discussions on who's doing what.
Okay.
We have to write a bylaw?
I guess we can. I think to the point, and I do understand the point, I didn't fully elaborate on that. There are things that the water department or wastewater department is not going to be able to do. They're not going to be able to do the fertilizer regulation. They're not going to be able to do planning regulation. There's certain things that they're not going to be engaged in. So the Board of Selectmen, through the administrator, would be responsible for those larger policy questions. And that's what I tried to point out. To the second question, you know, I think it's fascinating that the town of Chatham, you know, has one guy, Bob Dunkinson, that oversees the whole project. And he works with the outside consultant. So I think the model that we have here is it's a little bit more of a team approach that it's myself, and when necessary, I bring in Dan, and when necessary, I bring in Bob Cafarelli to provide some assistance. So it's the three of us that kind of get together to kind of work. And then the real work on designing it, once you know what we want to design, goes to CDM. And we've already done the contract with them. So I'm not sure, I mean, talking about bureaucracy, I'm not sure what that other person would do, you know, quite honestly. And if we're talking about bringing a person in, you're probably talking about bringing a person in, that's going to be a hundred thousand dollars a year. So it wouldn't be small money to do that. So, you know, Chatham has been successful and I think is successful moving forward with that approach. And I think that having that approach with us, you know, it makes a lot of sense to go down there as an efficient way of approaching it.
We can always measure that as time goes on different phases. As a wastewater management authority, we can add any time we want.
I'll give you that. I would still argue that this needs to be a straightforward document that assigns responsibilities to the board and to the commission. Because you go in and out of that in this document. It's stated upfront, then the responsibilities go in and out. And I want it to be clear because it should be understandable.
So two points, I think, is it the consensus of the board for Chris to move forward with this? And I think the answer is yes. And then Larry, could you send your comments in an email to Chris?
Yeah, if you have suggestions. I took a stab, Larry, at trying to divvy up the workload.
We're going to vote on the final product, so if you want to go ahead and send Chris comments, please do so.
Would it be helpful for you, you're a scientist, to have a chart, maybe? Because Charlene, I'm going to volunteer her, is really good at making charts and spreadsheets, just that would, you know?
And in fact, I talked about some charts with Alan Thompson about that because we agree that this should be clear because, for various reasons. One is you don't want to end up with a situation that, you know, we've heard at other meetings for other towns, when it's not clear in the charter, they start, the committees start fighting. I think we need to set this up for long-term success. The other thing I'm concerned about is that, you know, we're going to ask for a fairly big take next spring. And I think this deserves to be clearly understood.
I'm going to say really big take.
A really big take.
Okay.
And this deserves to be a simple, straightforward document that describes it, and that's what I'm after.
Okay, so you'll send your comments?
And I appreciate it. I may get back to that.
Yeah.
Chris, in the case of five people don't, we can't elect five, what's the language going to be in there about, does Selectmen appoint the fifth or?
Yeah, the charter already has that covered in the absence of a board member from an elected board that you guys would convene the remaining members of the board and then the Board of Selectmen and then you guys would pick, similar to what you guys did fairly recently with Housing Authority. That same process would apply.
Looking forward, and you mentioned something in your memo, looking forward on the Enterprise Fund. This is going to hit us, as you said, in a really big way next year. This is going to hit us, as you said, in a really big way next year. Shouldn't we form that enterprise fund or at least start the work on that enterprise fund now for next budget?
I need to, to have a discussion. Generally, when you do an enterprise fund, it's fully funded by the user fees. We do not have the ability to do that. I mean, if we charge six hundred people five hundred dollars, we only generate thirty thousand.
I thought there was a provision for tax in that letter opinion you got from, from KPM.
Yeah, I, I'll have to go back and, and just see if there's a way to do it. But I think setting that up as early as we can, as long as we can subsidize it. The subsidy is probably going to be in place for twenty years. I mean, there shouldn't be any, any illusion about.
Can you use another fund, one of the ninety-one, wherever they are funds?
Yeah, forty-four, fifty-three, eighteen and a half.
I, I can't keep, that's okay.
We, we could, we could do something like that and then roll into the enterprise. That's a political question too, though, because I think because of the past history, and I've heard this numerous times, that before they were an enterprise fund, they were rated all the time for the general fund.
And more checking accounts.
So that, you know, there's, there's that, that topic, so.
Unfortunately, they're right.
So Chris, lastly, so you, you know, direction obviously is to go forward with this.
Yes.
Lastly, you mentioned dissolving of the current Waste Water Implementation Committee, which we've been talking about for the last month and a half or so. I'm going to bring that back for a vote next week. It's not on the agenda to vote. But at, at this point, whether we start a new committee or not start a new committee, or when we start a new committee. I think we do Chris's recommendation, dissolve the current committee with a thank you. And then tell them if they want to be on the new committee to please go fill out a new citizens' activity request form. And then when we finish our charge, they can, but at this point, I, I went to the last meeting and, and.
No, we need to move on.
Yeah, we need to move on.
But, you know, I, I sent a draft. Can I get comments back on that?
I'll do mine.
I'm going to take another stab.
Okay.
And Chris, and, you know, with, with this direction.
So next week, I'm going to bring that back to dissolve that committee if everybody's okay. It's just not clear enough on the agenda, so I'm not going to do it tonight. Sharon?
Hi, Sharon Fleecker, ex-member of the Waste Water Committee.
Almost.
Almost. I, I just want to clarify something from my own mind here. So the, the wastewater, what you're calling commission, at this point is you people, the elected. Once this turns over, that the water finally starts running, then it's going to be?
Water commissioners.
Water slash wastewater.
All right, so somebody then would be?
I, I, I think just to clarify, right now, under state law, in the absence of anything in the charter. By forming a sewer commission, we've already had wastewater regulations that have been prolongated by this board. Under the legal authority of state law, the Board of Selectmen acts as the sewer commission, just to use a, a term. In, in the CWMP, it specifically says who is going to act as the Waste Water Management Authority. And in that CWMP, it already has identified the Board of Selectmen. So this is to delegate which authority or which elements of the work that needs to be done would be assigned to the, to Water slash Wastewater Commission. Versus what would the board retain for itself as the Waste Water Management Authority.
Okay, and, and that makes perfect sense. My question following that is, some of the work that needs to be done between now and May. When we have to, or the town needs to vote on this large sum of money. Are you people going to be the ones that are going to set up some sort of an education? As far as brochures to hand out, meetings to be presented to the public, as well as some of the financing? Which I know we've discussed some of it, but I.
So the, so the answer is we have a rough draft of a charge for, for a new committee, so hopefully you'll be on that committee. But administration right now, CDM Smith is still, has some money in, in the hopper for educational pieces. Very aware that we need to continue. So we are working quickly at getting a new committee and that's going to be their primary focus.
All right.
Is going forward, as well as these meetings. We, we're starting tonight, but we're bringing it back weekly or biweekly.
All right, I think that sounds.
And understanding the importance of it.
All right, I think that sounds like a great idea. Okay, thank you.
Anything else on this topic? Letters of agreement with CDM Smith for Cold Brook and Waste Water Implementation. So in your packet, you have a two proposed contracts or two contracts, because under fifty thousand, Chris can enter into contracts. So CDM Smith for Cold Brook, Chris, can you start with just an explanation of why we need CDM Smith on Cold Brook?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think you wanted me to bring this up kind of as a educational component for the, for the community. The town is engaged in a, obviously town meeting approved, two million dollars to look at Cold Brook. To, to make it a better nitrogen attenuator. So as wastewater from individual homes go through that system, how do we convert that into a healthier product that comes out? Basically, the, the science is showing that when you have a bog system and, and just old, old cranberries. That that's not a very good nitrogen, a natural nitrogen attenuator. And that you need to have ponds and you need to have marsh. There's a real question in terms of how big of a pond you need, how much marshland you need. And you guys pay me to do a lot of things and the one thing, I only took a limited amount of biology when I was in college and in high school. So, you know, I, I'm getting a sense for this, but I definitely need a resource available to me. So in this case, we have folks from SMass, the School of Marine Sciences and Technology. People that understand this a whole lot better than I do. So we, we have been receiving their work basically for free. So I did contract with them to provide assistance. Again, HCT owns, in this case, Harwich Conservation Trust owns the land. They have a, a different purpose that they want to see. They, they are much more focused on having it be a, a natural setting. And something that is visually pleasing and, and a, a biosphere, that diversified biosphere. And some of that works towards what we're trying to do and some does not. And having the resource available to me to have a, I think we're going to get there, that we can have a, a system that meets both of our needs. But I just cannot do this on my own. So they have engineers that work for HCT that they have state grants. And so I have CDM to help on the engineering piece and SMass to help on the biology piece.
Thank you, Chris. And we're only expending, this is basically a time contract, so it's thirty-five thousand, but likely it's not going to spend the thirty-five. Is it based on time?
Yes, it's based upon time. So if we can reach resolution sooner, then it would be, yes. And that's coming out of the two million dollars, so that's part of the, specifically related to the project.
Okay, Janelle?
I didn't realize that HCT owns Cold Brook.
They own the bog system on that side.
Up to it, right?
Yes, from Hoyt Road to Bank Street.
From Hoyt Road.
It's a sharp left to go the back road to Harwich Port Pizza House.
Yeah. So that, so they own an L-shaped piece of land?
Yes.
Okay, and then there's another bog that they don't own yet, like in the middle of that L, right?
They own everything that's along Cold Brook. Mr. Senate owns an adjacent bog.
Okay, so. I'm just confused. We're, we're only, we're, the town is only paying for the study for Cold Brook.
Actually, this would be for study and construction. If things go according to plan and we get the nitrogen attenuation that I believe that we can get, then I think it's two hundred and forty homes. Will not need to be sewered. So the, the, the real value for us is we could do this naturally as opposed to with sewers.
Right, so there's a possibility that some of this construction might disturb some of HCT land?
It will be all on HCT land.
It will all be on.
Well, I shouldn't say it too quickly. There are a couple of, basically the culverts underneath Bank Street and Hoyt Road. Are within the town right away, so there would be potentially some work that needs to be done to the culverts to help the flow of water.
So does HCT have to give us permission?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And what about Grassy Pond? That's town.
That's town, but that's not part of this work. The majority, I go to way too many meetings. The majority of the, the nitrogen that enters the system actually enters it from, I guess that's Lover's Lane, the, the road immediately to the north. So the, the nitrogen that comes from Grassy Pond through.
By the old fire station.
Gorm Road.
Gorm Road. So it, it comes from that area. So about six, I think it's sixty percent comes from that area. So very little nitrogen actually comes from Grassy Pond. There's not a lot of homes, if you think about it. It's a, it's a pond system, you know, Grassy Pond. So we're trying to find that section of where the houses to intercept and, and have a better nitrogen attenuation. Which basically just means there are some plants and the, I always get this word wrong. The bentic layer of muck basically on the bottom of the pond is tremendously effective at eating nitrogen.
Right.
So that's where a pond has significant value and some plants in a marsh have significant value. So instead of having a bog system, we would replace it with a, a natural system. It would be nice when it's done, but you know, nice for the work.
Thank you.
You even asked him.
Sharon Fleecker again. Wasn't that study already done for the, for the Cold Brook?
Yeah, the, the, the study that shows that you get nitrogen attenuation is done. The, the question that now is being worked on is how do you actually accomplish? What, what do you change and how big do you have the marsh? How big do you have the ponds?
And some of that was already done as well, some of it?
That, that actually, HCT has been, the state funded a part of the preliminary design. So we most likely will not have to design that on our own. We would actually piggyback on the, the HCT project.
Okay, for some reason I thought some of this.
No, you're right, you're right. I mean, I've been here for, coming up on four years, so we, we paid for a study to make sure that nitrogen attenuation, natural nitrogen, nitrogen attenuation would work. So that we know that it does work. This is actually, now we have to change the environment.
Right.
To go from a bog to a marsh and, and pond system.
I just thought there was something that was already done preliminarily on engineering as to what they were going to do to?
They're at about twenty-five percent design.
All right, all right. I just thought there was something already started on this, that we aren't starting from scratch.
Yeah, no, we're not starting from scratch.
Larry, go ahead.
And I think you're right. You know, they did a study and they, and they put a preliminary design in. I, I think the issue we have now unfortunately is, is different, as Chris says, some different purpose in life. And we would like to see it more directed towards open water that will remove nitrogen. And, and that's where we, quite frankly, have a conflict. I'm a little disappointed in the conflict. I, you know, if it were straightforward, we could have used more of that design.
All right.
Originally done.
I just remember reading the study on that. That's what made me think there was.
I think a good way to visualize this is a Muddy Creek project. They did some research. They said Muddy Creek, if you open it up, then you'll get good nitrogen attenuation, so you know, that would be effective. And we actually paid to have the bridge designed and then the bridge constructed. So we're in that stage of getting it designed now.
All right, all right.
So the second contract that's listed is wastewater implementation. As, as we've discussed, we are in, in conversation with Dennis and Yarmouth. About doing a tri-town treatment facility in Dennis and Yarmouth and Harwich tying into that. So this is our engineer, engineering company who works for both other towns. This is a contract to kind of get us to the next level of conversation. Chris, you can kind of just tell us where we're at and.
Yeah, no, you did a good job with that. I mean, you know, we have three towns. We're the only one that's been at the table that hasn't been paying. So it's not right. So we are, we are in fact now, you know, paying. And then there are elements of this contract that have also assistance to us for preparing education materials and things like that. For the, the ask at town meeting of the twenty-two million dollars for the, the sewer construction. So it's the community partnership, potentially land use controls, if there's any elements that need to be done. And then miscellaneous services, which include the education piece.
We've also applied for some grants to pay for this as well, which we just haven't heard back on, right, Chris?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, up to Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Under Town Administrator's report, just a, a couple of things or a few things. On the Planning Board priorities, I know sometimes you go through these meetings and I, I try to walk away. And hopefully the Planning Board tries to walk away with what are priorities that are bigger priorities versus secondary priorities. So I just wanted to make sure that we're kind of all on the same page. I just starred the ones that, that they presented. So the, the primary priorities that I saw from the Planning Board from the joint meeting. Was the review and draft of the recreational marijuana bylaw, review and draft of the amendment to the existing accessory apartment bylaw. Review and revise the draft amendments to the town's local initiative program. And start the, the new comprehensive plan by reviewing the scope of work, estimated time and cost. And then kind of the, I guess, the natural follow-ons to those would be the review and revise, so these are secondary priorities. Review and revise the commercial village overlay district in Harwich Port. The East Harwich zoning elements that would need to be done. And then the sidewalk traffic to make sure that sidewalks are ADA non-compliant, to make them ADA compliant. So that's what I had jotted down in my notes. Hopefully those notes correspond to, to the people in the room. I just wanted to make sure that there was some consistency with members of the Planning Board that were there.
That sounds right and accurate to me. I spoke, Julie, on, on your behalf about the bylaw, the zoning bylaw apartment. But that looks, that looks like the accurate reflection, Chris.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just, if I may, I'll just note on that, and Jim is in the audience, there was a nice article in the Cape Cod Times this morning about accessory apartments. A group that's, has some suggestions on bylaws that they're going town to town with. I can leave this for the minutes.
Yeah, if you want to, I'll make a, we'll scan it and then send it to all board members, please.
Because that might save some work we can steal from them.
Great, thank you, Chris.
The next one I had here, I was just kind of a wastewater status report. I'm not going to, I, I've already kind of given a, a Cold Brook design. And partnership on the Phase Two of the survey work. They are still engaged in the survey work. And that is a ongoing process. I think that we'll probably see some more details come out probably in December, January timeline. So just to give people a, a sense for that, and as I have additional information, I'm happy to update folks. There were, these next items were, two of these next items were specific requests that were made by board members. I think there was a request, Janelle wanted to see the, the customer service survey from the golf department, which I thought was pretty interesting stuff. They, they've done a, a good job. And then the staffing plan, it's kind of interesting, over this last summer, there was eighteen positions that we had to recruit and hire. Out of those eighteen positions, I think there's two of them that were still pending, two or three that were pending. The balance of them have all been filled and only two of those out of the eighteen were actually new positions that were contemplated in the budget. So I know there was some question in, in regards to that. The housing court, you actually had stumped me on that and we had a, a discussion at the managers' meeting. In which the state has funded a, an additional housing court judge to now come down and do like a circuit rider routine. So they're looking at coming down and meeting in, meeting in Barnstable. To get a sense for if the judge has, I don't remember the amount of hours, but whatever, fifteen hours a week. To do housing court-related issues on the Cape. How should he use that fifteen hours a week most judiciously and, and where should he do it? So I think, actually, I'll, I'll make sure that I include, or maybe it was in, in Charlene's report, that the date that, I think they had the date and the time. But they didn't have the location established. It's going to be somewhere in, in Barnstable. But if folks are interested in that listening session of what that means, having additional housing court.
And she included the website, so I guess.
Yeah, so if, if people are interested in that, I just wanted to follow up. I think we have one more where there was a request for information about the building department, how many permits we have. So we're still, I think they're still collecting information. Once we get a finalized report, we'll share that as well. And then the departmental weekly reports are, are in there, so I don't know if there's any specific follow-up.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have one question or comment. Because this is brought to my attention by some people in town, but it seems to have been a, I wouldn't say a lot, but certainly vandalism at the Bank Street beach. And I see in Link's report, he's, he was out twice making repairs from vandalism. Do you know what's, what's going on there, what, what the extent is or the?
Actually, I don't. I, I can look in and have Link get back and see what the extent is.
Cause maybe we want to follow up with, you know, police or something, if there's, it was, uh.
I know.
It's been, and, it brought, it was brought to my attention, I see in Link's report in two weeks running, that they've had to, uh, repair, uh, results of vandalism.
Yeah, just, uh, on that topic, I, I know, um, taking Route Six home, that the, uh, the bridge, the, the bike path.
Yeah.
Bridge that goes up to, um, Brewster. You know, I get it that, you know, kids like to spray paint, but, you know, the concrete was pretty nice, and someone spray painted love on it. And, you know, I wish people would just leave public infrastructure alone. I mean, to go in, I mean, we'll have to get the state or whoever has that, I'll ask Link. But, you know, sandblast it and then repaint it. I mean, this stuff, it's not inexpensive to go and, and fix it, so I get, you know, people that do this stuff think it's cute. It's expensive, we have limited dollars, and when we spend it on doing, cleaning up from vandalism, it's just, it's such a waste of our money. But I wish people would just leave well enough alone. Do your artwork in the art studio, come over to the, uh, cultural center and, and rent a studio space from us and, and do your artwork there in, in a more constructive, uh, in a more constructive way.
Janelle?
Was that the bridge that goes over Route Six?
Yes.
So is that a town or a state?
I'll have to check. I'm hoping it's a state, but.
I think it's state too, right? But, you know, that brings up a good point. Um, since we are becoming more of an art community in Harwich, in Harwich Port, maybe we should consider down the road, um, having some sort of, uh, outdoor art mural, graffiti, positive graffiti kind of, um, showcase, like, you know, for people who really want to express themselves. That might be something to think about down the, down the way. You know, Orleans has some beautiful murals on the sides of their buildings. Harwich doesn't really have anything like that. And Dennisport too. Dennisport has.
Don't count me in. I have no art capacity.
Yeah, but, anyway, just something to think about.
Good idea of it.
Thank you.
That concludes my, uh, comments this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Just a comment on the, uh, weekly reports. I, I find them very informative, thorough, and, um, we've had a lot of comments from the public about how much our staff does. And I think it's a great way that we're showcasing it. Selectmen's Report.
Uh, Don? Other than I can report to you that apparently Disney operates during the month of August when Satan takes his summer vacation in Florida.
Janelle?
Um, my kids and I had the opportunity to walk up to the Democratic Town Committee Labor Day picnic yesterday at Brooks Park. And I just wanted to say thank you to all who put that together. It was really a good time and, uh, informative. A couple of good speakers, including, um, a Democratic candidate for governor.
Julie? Larry?
Yeah. I, uh, very briefly, uh, uh, nominee committee, and we approved the nomination of the ADA committee. I met with, uh, Matt Hart and, uh, Carla Burke, uh, a couple of days ago, uh, as a liaison, and, uh, and they're gone, uh, the committee's gone whole, they're starting to move. It's been, uh, you know, Chris has stepped up and tried to handle the crisis, but the, uh, some of the major just paperwork, if you will, of the committees, has been, uh, lacking for, you know, for a few years. So Matt's been, uh, working hard to pick up on that, to bring us, uh, be sure we're compliant, uh, looking at grants. Um, he'll come to us, and the committee will probably come to us in the near term to change the name. It's, uh, disability is not the, uh, the, the favored name right now. Uh, the suggestions are accessibility, and I think that's probably what they'll come with, will be a, uh, Harwich, uh, accessibility, uh, rights committee, as being a more meaningful term, in the sense you were trying to provide accessibility to everyone. But, uh, uh, they're, they're really, uh, they've jumped into it, the committee. They're, they're meeting in a couple of weeks, and so that's great.
Great.
And thank you, Chris, for, uh, for doing what you did, but now we have a committee, which, you're one man, but you're not a committee.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
We'll move.